We'll call the meeting to order. I'll let the record reflect, all board members are present except Lori Dudley, who is out of town. 1.2 is recognition of visitors and guests. We welcome you all here this evening. Glad to see you here. 1.3 will all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Next is correspondence and recognition. We have 1.41, public participation. We have a request from James Nelson. Two wants to address the board. So James, come forward.
I apologize I didn't know about the listening session last night.
No, that's fine.
My name is James Nelson. I am not a resident of this district. I do not have students in this district, and I do not work here. That being said, I was compelled to make this outreach for other reasons. Compelled to speak up for someone that cannot. I came to my attention recently the controversy that's currently plaguing the district and your board. A responsive reaction to what I understand was an isolated incident when the teachers afraid to be allies to those who need them. I'm here right now, 175 miles away from public, because I am friends with the teacher who's convinced that they cannot be an ally to their students. A teacher that is forced to sit by and watch as history repeats itself. A teacher who has himself second guessing whether or not they are an ally. When they feel allies should be standing up for what is right, they can't do that. A little bit about me. I came from a small town in western Minnesota, graduated high school in 2009 from a school not unsimilar to yours. My difference is I did not have the same chart of the majority of those that are even here today. As a teenager, I was growing, developing, trying to figure out who I was. I knew I was different, and I knew that I had to hide my true colors to get by. I spent years, I should have been learning more about who I was and embracing myself, hiding it. I was gay. I was gay and I barely even knew it. I didn't know. I didn't know if it was right or okay. I didn't know if it was broken or defective. How was I supposed to know when everybody around me wasn't like me? I wasn't. I was trapped and I had no one to turn to. That's not to say that there weren't teachers that are going to listen. But how was I supposed to know it was a trusty and receptive year? Because I was trapped, I tried to turn to my peers, those I was closest with. I became gay. What a devastating and regrettable decision I had made. It's a feeling like I was different because I was putting on a show to be what I thought and here's one thing that me wasn't bad enough. Now everyone knew. Single-handedly, the worst moment in my life. Life got so bad, I attempted to take my own. I was unsuccessful in this attempt, and I thank my lucky stars for that every day. After this, my grades plummeted. Failure classes left and right, I finally found an ally just months before I was hoping to graduate. I didn't know if I would. I didn't know for sure that I would graduate in 2009 until the week of graduation. This ally was someone on the staff that was there to tell me that none of it mattered. That the only thing that mattered was finishing high school and moving on. I graduated at the bottom of my class. Not the bottom 10%, the bottom. I graduated the last in my class. These grades do not reflect my potential. They highlight the lack of support I was provided from my district. I finished off college with a 3.9 GPA, a clear indication that the necessary tools were provided to me. I went on to find a successful career at the United States Department of Veteran Affairs. Most notable so far with that was my time at Fort Sully National Cemetery, where I personally, I'm sorry, personally conducted the middle services of over 1,700 veterans, probably well over an MVA pride. The moral of this story is that the necessary tools that my district should have provided me to succeed, they failed me. The things that I would have given to see a pride flag sticker pinned in a teacher's classroom, so I knew that that room, that teacher was somewhere where I could be myself, that I didn't have to hide. This is something that could literally save a life. If suicide is not something that your school hasn't endured, it's a solid possibility of proposal of 606.1. Though I could go on about the history of the pride flag and the meaning of the symbols we have used since the Holocaust, the symbols of hope and community. I would rather focus on the more recent history since 1978, and the colors of the rainbow reflecting the coming together of all races, genders, orientations, backgrounds, and beliefs into one rainbow. You owe it to the students, who you're possibly your president, to provide an environment where they are free to grow. You owe it to your teachers to be free from fear. While I'm here, I also wanted to share that I did some research and discovered that 606.1 as proposed is a carbon copy of Bloomington School District's 1984 version, a painfully dated policy and controversial materials. Heatherman, due diligence done prior to the public disclosure of the proposed policy, you would have hung the three years ago the district you copied replaced it with a new version of 606.1, I'm sorry, due to legal conflict in the community. I printed off the entire board a copy of both 1984 and 2020.
Thank you, James, for your comments. We will move on to 1.42, recognition of students, staff, and community. We have several congratulations to honor tonight. Congratulations to a boys soccer team on winning the Section 2AA championship and making it to the Minnesota State Soccer Tournament. Congratulations to Fanwell Walday, who placed second overall in the boys' cross-country sections and placed 10th in the Minnesota State Cross-Country Tournament, and earning a place on the Minnesota All-State Cross-Country Team as being in the top 25 runners. Also, congratulations to the boys soccer coach, Juan Flores, for being named to the 2023 Section Double-A Coach of the Year, and boys soccer coach Charles Sade as being named to Section 2AA All Tournament Team Member. Also, congratulations to Chris Doden on receiving the Educators of Excellence Award from the Minnesota Rural Education Association. Congratulations to all those members of the district. Moving on to 1.42, and 1.43 is the presentation of the 2022-23 Audit Report by Alan Hofker
Hello. I think you all have a copy of the report in front of you. I want to start by thanking the administration and staff for all of their assistance and cooperation, and for the board for allowing us to be of service again this year. Overall, the district has maintained a solid and stable financial position again this year. We're just going to look at a few pages out of this big book that you have. If you look to page five, or the fifth page in, it's not page five, it's the fifth page in, right after the school district officials. That's the independent auditor's report, and the second paragraph. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district as of June 30, 2023. That's an unmodified, cleed audit report, and that's what you're looking for. Any district that spends over $750,000 of federal source grants and revenues is also subject to higher scrutiny called a single audit. This opinion covers that single audit process also. The front of the report, then, if you go, continue on, is the management's discussion and analysis. This is more of the district's presentation. There's some things about, you know, five-year plans and that in there. I'm actually going to go up to page 26. So we won't look at the management discussion, and then in the back of the report is all of the detailed information for all of the funds, the budgets, et cetera. I won't go through all of that. I'm just going to take a look at an overview, and we'll end the night with looking at fund balances. But for now, if you turn to page 26, this is all of your governmental funds. The first column is the general fund. The revenues were just over $55,741,000. Your expenditures for the general fund, $59,385,000. That's 1.5 under budget. The district had budgeted for a decrease in this fund balance of $4,939, but you'll see the third number from the bottom. There was actually a decrease of $3,606,000. Some of that is ESAR funds were included in the budget but couldn't actually be spent until fiscal year '23-'24, and so that would decrease the budget. And then also, there was a couple of capital outlay projects that weren't able to be completed, some roofing and a parking lot. So those are some of the differences in between budget and prior year. The second column we'll look at is food service. The revenues were just over $2,856,000, and the expenses were just over $3,012,000. That brought the fund balance down 156,000 to over $1,064,000. There was a budgeted decrease in the fund of 146,000, and the main decrease in revenues is related to free and reduced meals. In the prior years, if you remember, free and reduced, there was actually free meals, which will be the same thing again in fiscal year '23-'24. The largest increase in expenditures from the prior year was in salaries. There were more locations. And the largest item under budget was food costs. Food costs were up, but just not as much as what had been budgeted for. There were also plans to decrease this fund to try and get it to within the mandated three month reserve allowance. In the third column, that's community service. Revenues were just over $2,39,000, and expenses were just under $1,836,000. That increased the fund balance by $203,000 to $1,284,000. The main changes from budgeted or expected amounts were minimal, and the program funding and related expenditures were due to just some program changes and limitations in location that may have disrupted some of the services that you would have been able to provide. Page 26, continuing into the fourth column, the capital projects building construction. Revenues were just over $29,000, and expenses were just over $4,625,000, decreasing the fund balance to just over $183,000. Expenses from building included the completion of the intermediate building, the community education building, and the small remaining balance at $183,000 is due to the Learning Second to the last column here, debt service fund. Revenues were just over $4,343,000, and expenses were just over $4,749,000. This decrease reflects a planned decrease because of payment of bonds of, as you see, just towards the bottom there, a decrease of a little bit over $405,000, and that was the intent with all the refunding that you did and payment schedules. So all of those individual funds and the increases and decreases, take us back to And this is the fund balances for each of those funds as we've just spoke about. The fund balances at the end of the year, on the far-right column, the total government The prior year was $54,166,000. That's a decrease of $8,560. It's accumulation of all the other funds that we looked at. Primarily, though, as we mentioned, driving that decrease was the capital projects building construction fund, with a decrease of just over $4,495,000. You'll also notice, when I'm talking about the fund balances being at $45 million, if you look over to the left, it shows you have non-spendable fund balances, restricted fund balances, committed-for fund balances in the various funds, assigned-for projects, and now cable three. And then you get down to the unassigned fund balance. All of those combine into be that $45 million, but your unspendable, or your, I'm sorry, unassigned balance in the general fund is just over $12 million, at $12,209,000. Last year was just over $18,458,000. So there was a decrease, as mentioned. In closing, the fund balance remains relatively strong, with just under 29 weeks of operation in your general fund expenses. The prior year, that was 33 weeks. And then in the unassigned fund balance, that stayed the same. That's 10 weeks, and the prior year, you had 10 weeks of operating expenses. So the unassigned stayed pretty similar there. There are some letters in back. There's a management rep letter that I need signed in back. Otherwise, unless you have any questions, again, the district is in a strong financial
Any questions for Ellen? Hearing none, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
1.44, Presentation of the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Annual Report. Sarah Sumin and Sharon Johnson.
Good evening. Sharon was unable to be here this evening, so I'm going to share both reports with you. You'll see a packet of information in front of you with all the data. I'm going to go through that and share some of the highlights. First of all, the World's Best Workforce is an annual report submitted to the state of Minnesota, focusing on five goals. You can see those on page one. Getting all students ready for school, really focusing on pre-K programming, all students in third grade achieving grade-level literacy, going on to closing achievement gaps, and then all students attaining college and career readiness, and all students graduating. So if you look at the first, or on the first goal there, within our pre-K program, they use a kindergarten and entry profile tool, and last year, 72% of students met that score. That was a slight decrease from the year before, where it was 76%. Moving on to goal number two, read well by third grade. On the 2023 MCA reading accountability test, 29.8% of third graders met or exceeded proficiency. And again, that was a slight decrease from 2022, which was 32.7%. Our third goal was achievement gap reduction between all of our subgroups, and I've broken it down by reading and math. So for our reading, you can see overall, on average, in grades three through 10, our proficiency decreased from 2022, from 36 to 30.7%. However, you can see that there was an increase in scoring among the white and two or more race categories, and I've highlighted those in green for you. On the next page is the math scores. You'll see a very similar trend line. In 2022, our MCA score for grades three through 10 was 27.2%, and in 2023, you'll see that slight decrease, 24.5. Again, in green, you'll see four subgroups which saw increases from 2022, that'd be black, Asian, white, and two or more races. The other category saw a decrease from last year. Goal number four, looking at college and career readiness. As a district, we've chosen to use attendance of at least 90% as an indicator or criterion, as well as career goals and completing a career assessment. Students complete the career goals and career assessment in their freshman seminar class, as well as their continual learning plan at the Learning Center, and so 100% of students complete those. And you can see the attendance rates there. At the high school, it was 76.4%, and at the Learning Center, it was 17%. And our last goal was graduation rate. We report on two different numbers. The four-year, that would be the cohort class of 2022. As a district, our graduation rate was 65%. We also report on a seven-year cohort, which is a class of 2019. You can see, after four years, they had a 73.5% graduation rate, and then that increased to 79.1% after the additional three-year timeline. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions before I move on to the integration report.
What do you feel are some of the biggest barriers towards moving in the direction of meeting these goals?
That's a great question. We have a lot of strategies that we're trying this year. A lot of teachers are being letters trained. Letters focuses on foundational skills of literacy, and so all of our pre-K teachers are completing that, as well as kindergarten through grade five, as well as six through 12, teachers who teach EL and SPED. We are also doing some intervention work with a couple adaptive programs at the intermediate school. We have Lexia Core 5. It gives, students take a diagnostic, and then they work on skills to try to fill those gaps. And at the middle school, we are using a program called iReady in both reading and math to also target those skills. And then we're also working with the Regional Center of Excellence for the high school and the Learning Center to work with staff on professional learning, work on early warning indicators. So we're doing a lot of things in all the buildings. With some of the professional learning, we're not going to see big changes. It'll be slow changes over time.
Are there new ideas or new strategies that you're advocating for that the school board needs to address in order to move the needle in the right direction?
Sure. I think, you know, having a literacy focus for the next two years is a lot of professional learning time. I don't want to add too many things to staff's plates, especially with this PD that we've selected. We're also doing some co-teaching within our K-12 system. So as soon as we get some data back at the end of this year, we'll be able to give some definitive answers to see which direction that needs to move in the future.
Are some of our deficiencies still COVID-related?
You could say. I mean, obviously, we're three years removed from COVID. COVID definitely had an impact. We, across the state, across the nation, there were very similar trend lines with COVID, with the drop. We just started much lower in our proficiency rates than a lot of other districts across the state. So yeah, there is still lingering pieces of COVID, but we're still seeing in, like, grades three, you know, we're hoping to see some increases soon with students who haven't had interrupted education.
Is it my understanding, the MCA test isn't really a true picture of where we are, really, is it?
So the MCA really looks at how well the school system is teaching state standards. When we look at a lot of our other programs, like the iReady or the FastBridge, we're seeing similar, maybe slightly higher proficiency rates. So what you're seeing in front of you could be said is a pretty accurate picture when we take a look at some of the other data sources. It's not a true total. Obviously, we want lots of data sources to make instructional decisions and to move forward. This is one piece of the puzzle, though.
Okay.
All right. So moving on to the integration report, you can see the NCIC vision is really to work with different school districts for cultural integration, academic achievement, student success, parent-family involvement, and then professional development. You can see a diversity trend in District 518, starting in 2002 with 36.2%, and in 2023, our diversity is 81.7%. Their first goal, keep in mind, both of these plans are written on a three-year time scale. So by 2023, they were really looking to see eighth graders proficiency rate measured by the MCA math test, and their goal was not met. They wanted to get a level of 33% to 40%, and eighth-grade MCA was 20.6%. So that goal was not met. Goal number two was really focused on professional development for staff. The baseline in 20, I guess, 2020, was 0%, and 97% of staff last year took some form of professional learning designed to close achievement gaps. So that goal was met. Goal number three was looking, by this year, on a district-administered survey, the percentage of students in grades four, five, seven, and nine who report on improved school climate will increase from 70 to 75%. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to hold their summer camps, where they did a lot of their strategies, so they are unable to report on this due to COVID. Goal number four, that was met. Their focus was to increase the percentage of racially or ethnically diverse teachers and staff. You can see that teachers, 52, or sorry, 5.2% of teachers are racially or ethnically diverse. When we look at support staff, that number is 32.2%. So that goal was met. And then goal number five, by 2023, they wanted 150 students from the reduced or free lunch student subgroup to participate in NCIC out-of-school-time programming, really focusing on college and career readiness, making at least one college visit, and participating in leadership or civic engagement activities. And 161 students participated last year, so that goal was also met. They have, or NCIC has submitted their new plan to the state, so those, you will hear an update on those goals next year. Any questions on that report? I'll do my best.
Any questions for Sarah?
Chairman, a question on the first part, Sarah, of what about staff impact on the goal reaching? Lack of filling positions, turnover, class sizes, is there anything that... Is there anything that, you know, just back of what a school board can do?
Yeah, I mean, all of those. I mean, when we have staff in rooms who care for students, that's what we want. We want positions to be full. So that does impact. I don't have any firm data on that, so I can't speak to that piece. But I know that how staff feel. When I was in grad school, my professor always said, if your staff are okay, your students are okay. So I think, you know, we're also doing a K-12 social-emotional learning. Again, there's a lot of strategies in place to try to move the needle towards higher student achievement.
The numbers go back beyond 19? A lot of it is quoted from there.
Yeah, so we wrote the plan in 2019. If you would like further data back, I can get that for you.
Okay, any further questions for Sarah?
One more, sure. When we put these goals three years out, and we aren't quite meeting those goals at this point, will these goals be left the same then till we reach them? Or do you readjust the goals for the next year? Like, would you say we're not getting there fast enough? Would you reduce them to be more in line with what you think there should be?
Yeah, we're, I'm going to work with my committee this year and do a comprehensive needs assessment and rewrite some of these goals. The state, these are the questions or the indicators. It's up to districts for how they report on them. So to Adam's point, perhaps MCA, we want to pick a different metric or a different criterion, and we can do that. There's also a lot of things going through the legislature with the Read Act and literacy right now. So I'm just waiting for more, for additional information before we move forward with some of that.
And the after-school programs that we provide for students with homework, have we been finding that that's having a positive impact for those students that participate?
Yeah, I don't have data on those numbers, but I do know the edge programming uses some of the intervention programming that we have. It is, and they focus on those math and reading skills.
Do we track the students who participate and then relate that back to the teachers and the classes to see if they can give any input on whether or not they're seeing success from that?
Yeah, teachers have a large impact in who's recommended or referred to those programs, and there is communication that happens between those edge teachers and the classroom teachers. However, I can't speak to what data is collected and how that is shared with staff back and forth.
I didn't know if there's some anecdotal comments, maybe from teachers saying they're noticing a difference?
Yeah, and I don't have any information on that.
Okay, any further questions for Sarah? Hearing none, thank you for your report.
Yeah, thank you.
We will move on to approval of the agenda, 2.1 and 2.2.
I move approval of the consent agenda and the main agenda.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. 3.0 approval of minutes.
I move approval of the minutes of the October 17th and November 2nd and November 13th special school board meetings, and also accept the committee minutes that were included.
Motion by Steve, second by Adam to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. 4.0 consent agenda, we need to approve the items on the consent agenda.
So move Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Moving down to five point, the main agenda, 5.1 financial overview, Dave.
You have the revenues and expenditures report through the end of October, so we're four months into the year, a third of the way through. As it appears here, our revenues are up pretty good from last year. Our expenditures are also up a little bit from last year. Obviously, this budget will get amended at least once, probably after Christmas sometime. There haven't been any large unusual expenditures or revenues. The trust fund looks very hefty in the revenue side, but that's a revenue that we were hoping to get last year that didn't come in until this year, so that inflated that percentage quite a bit, so. Nothing really new or unusual.
Okay, any questions for Dave? Okay, hearing none, we move on to 5.2, approve the 2223 audit report.
I move approval of the 2223 audit report.
Second, Whitbom.
Second by Adam, second by Matt to approve the audit report presented this evening. Any discussion?
I should just note, Pat and Ryan handed out this spreadsheet during the instructional operations. There was a couple questions referencing the amount of federal dollars that we're doing, and just questions on the remaining COVID funds, how much we had, what's the plan. And they put this spreadsheet together that kind of shows where we're at. I don't know if you have questions for them that they could answer based on that, but you see, we have just over $3 million in ESAR funds left, and that is budgeted to be expended this year by the end of June.
Any questions about this? Are they, are those numbers set, are targeted to be applied to certain areas that we've identified already?
Yes, yes. The blue area down below kind of indicates where the funds are budgeted to be spent. Pat or Ryan, if you want to speak to that?
Most of the funds will be used for salaries and benefits for improved learning recovery, to help Sarah out in her programs. Some of these, the 161, the middle column, that is certainly to be used in after-school and summer school programs, again, to address the learning recovery. The 169 on the other is a special set of funds that the federal government put out to replace some lost revenue due to student membership dropping.
Okay, any questions about the ESAR funds?
When do these have to be used up by? Isn't there a period?
Right now, the plan, they say they can go through June 30th and 24th. In actuality, you do have up till September 30th and 24th, because of something called the Titans, and then they give you 27 months to spend. So it has to be spent by that time, otherwise you go back to state, up to and down to federal.
So these funds have been designated for certain areas for expenditure?
Certain areas have salaries and benefits for the addition of the new classroom teachers that we've added, for mental health professionals, for school counselors to address other mental health issues, and other purposes as well. Last year, a portion of the funds were used to replace, to improve air quality at the high school through the replacement of the HVAC units on the high school.
Okay, any further questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the audit. Any further discussion? All those in favor, the motion signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. 5.3, approve the World's Best Workforce Achievement and Integration Annual Report, which we just heard.
I move the approval of the report.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Aaron to approve the World's Best Workforce Report, which we just heard. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. 5.4, approve updated Alternative Learning Schedule.
You want me to speak on that one? Yes. The Alternative Learning Schedule, it's actually a new name, so there may be a little confusion. It's basically our weather-related learning days, also pandemic learning days. So it's our Learn From Home Plan. We did have to make some adjustments due to state statute in terms of employees and how they will be needing to work or able to get compensated during days when we're learning from home. So the main adjustment was for hourly staff. I believe you have the attachment in front of you. There, the main changes would be on the right column with hourly staff, just ensuring that those individuals have a way to either have work or be compensated.
Any questions about the learning schedule?
Not being on the instructional committee, I may have missed some of these conversations, but was part of this, like, in teacher and staff negotiations? Or how did this come to fruition and who was involved?
In terms of just development of the plan?
Development of the plan, and then the changes that have been made.
Yeah, the changes were mainly just to ensure that we had the right language in place for our paraprofessionals. In the past, paraprofessionals on Learn From Home Day, some of them had an opportunity to work, but it was more selective in terms of student need. Typically, a student may be with an IAP. They would work with case manager in that para. If they had some connectivity at home, the para might reach out to them on a Google Meets or a Zoom, so those paras had an opportunity to work. Legislation now, all paras have an opportunity to be paid for that day if we move to a Learn From Home. So we're working on plans where more pairs can obviously work with students or do some PD. Either way, there is some compensation for pairs. We want them working with kids. With our elementary, that's really difficult. On a Learn From Home Day for elementary students, they're working on packets, so that idea of a para being able to be real accessible. There's been some discussion about, could they reach out, make phone calls, make sure students and parents have some access to a resource? But really, it was, they are going to be paid, so we need to make sure that that document represented that, so.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion? No, we don't. Need a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the updated schedule.
Motion by Steve.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom to approve the updated Alternative Learning Schedule. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. 5.5, approve resolution requiring the tally of write-in votes only if write-in votes are greater than a ballot candidate's total votes. This is a roll call vote. Need a motion? For the recommended action?
I move that we approve the resolution for tallying the votes of write-in votes.
Motion by Steve.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Cast a vote in this, or is it?
Oh, you can vote.
Okay.
So I'm not opposed to the premise of this policy at all, but the policy in front of me looks like it was printed off as a template policy and has not been cleaned up to be adopted by our district. There, for example, in the middle of it, there's some text in parentheses that says, "Note, the school board can revise the second whereas clause to reflect its reasoning for adopting the resolution." You know, giving us, you know, suggesting that we customize it to meet our needs. So I guess I would recommend that the district customize this, clean it up a little bit so that we vote on a ISD 518 policy.
Chair, I'm assuming that this, my motion was to approve it as it is. It is personalized, it does have Independent School District 518 requires less votes, so it is personalized. I think the note basically says we could change if we want to, but I'm fine with the way it is, and I, my motion is to approve it as it is. Obviously, we would not have the note in our resolution in the middle. That was just a note to say we could revise it, but my motion did not revise it. It was taking it as it was written.
Okay, any further discussion? Is that something you just want to refer on to the administration?
Yeah, I mean, the general content of it, I have no qualms with. It's more so just the presentation, I think, can be, could be cleaned up a bit, but I am comfortable with the meaning of the policy.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just to know, it's not a policy. It's just a resolution that we get from the School Board Association, so.
Oh.
Generally, just present it as it's presented to us.
Oh.
With any names or positions that we need to put in there.
Okay.
Yeah, the Southwest West Central Service Co-op also passed a resolution somewhat similar to this. In their case, they changed it where they don't get very many write-in votes, but as you all recall, you revoted for the board for the Southwest West Central at one of our last meetings. You had a chance to make that ballot, and they changed theirs to be a little bit more different than what this one is. It had to do with the threshold limit, that they lowered it down significantly, saying, you know, what they would, what they'd actually cover. So each school district can adjust that limit, I think, is what they're talking about, where they would set it to say whether or not they count them or not, so.
Oh, I mean, I think that, is it worth having a discussion over that? It's, you know, and this, there's, I mean, and with this resolution, there's never, well, it's very unlikely that there would be a published breakdown of any write-in votes. And I don't have a strong opinion on that, but that's, I think, if people would feel strongly about wanting to know who people are writing in, then we would want to consider adopting a resolution that would have a minimum threshold, rather than saying that, well, as long as the number of write-in votes doesn't exceed the number of votes that the least popular candidate received. That's what this is saying.
Well, is this resolution something we got to do every year then when there's the election? Or is this going to kind of go on the books?
Just go on from now on.
From now on.
We've never had this one before, then, I don't know. This is something new that they come up with.
So this is something that the School Board Association's saying we need to pass? Or is it something that's?
Well, I mean, they're offering it up there. You don't have to pass it, but it helps the election officials save some time, basically.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Prinze.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Mr. Whitbom.
Aye.
Resolution passes. 5.6, approve CEO program collaboration.
The CEO program was talked about at instructional committee. I don't know, did you all get a flyer? Did you get a copy? I will say that the CEO program is something that was actually brought to... I will say that the CEO program is something that was actually brought to my attention probably eight years ago. And at that time, we did not have anyone outside the district really championing it. Mr. Hightcamp came back to us a few different times, and he has championed it. He's really moving things forward. It takes a fair amount of fundraising and partnerships with businesses. It takes a facilitator that is not employed by the school district. That individual will work with typically juniors and seniors. Our main responsibility is to try to create schedules typically as like a first block, where about 20 to 25 students have an opportunity all year to work on entrepreneurship skills, learn about regional businesses going on, and they have projects that they have to work on throughout. Many of them, it'll even start before first block. It's all offsite. I think I would recommend moving it forward. It's a wonderful program. It started to pop up in districts around us. We just, we didn't have anyone like Bruce in the past willing to move it forward. So we're very much appreciative that he was able to do that. I think it's a great thing for our juniors and seniors.
So that's exclusive to just?
What's that?
That's exclusive to just the kids in our high school? Or this is a program for all kids, right? And it's already in place? Is that correct?
In terms of who would get to sign up?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll go in the registration guide. So when juniors and seniors are registering for courses next year, they would try to apply to be in that course. I wouldn't, I would predict there's probably more that will want it. So then Mr. Brands and Mr. Hastings will have to work on who really is the best fit. Maybe look at seniors first, that type of thing. And then that becomes their first block class, and then by second block, they're back in the building.
And there are schools that are already doing this.
We award a credit.
Yeah, I believe, isn't there already a Facebook page or something? Where they show what they're doing or whatever? I don't know. I just think it looks like a good program, and I'm glad we can have it here.
Has a credit been established for it?
It is an elective credit.
Elective credit.
So if I understand, that they would be outside the school setting, going to a business or someplace where they'd be mentored at that location and then come back into the school system and so on. And our approval is to make it part of our curriculum?
Correct.
Any further questions? Bruce is here. If you have any questions for him. He's done a lot of work with this and really appreciate what he's done. Getting the students the opportunity to go out with a hands-on situation, kind of. Any questions for Bruce? We have a motion and a second? We don't have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the CEO program collaboration.
I second.
Okay, motion by Adam, second by Aaron to approve the CEO program. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate what was discussed at our committee meeting, the fact that the programming will be happening majority of the time outside of the school building and that our students will be traveling to those locations. So they'll be coordinating and getting them there. But Bruce's experiences with surrounding programs that are existing already, and we'd be developing with their direction. And funds secured for three years to be moving the program forward that would not be school dollars, but dollars raised by Bruce and the board of directors. It's a great program.
This was a grant, actually? The funds come from a grant?
Can you have just have Bruce maybe take the microphone or address a couple of those things? Mr. Chairman?
It was, yeah, it was, yeah, let him explain where the funds come from. Come over here.
Yeah, thank you so much. All of the above. We received $45,000 collectively in grants. $35,000 of that and then local youth foundations trust grant, I think a LIFT grant is what they call that. Southwest Initiative Foundation offered $10,000 in grants. And then we've secured investments and friends of CEO contributions that will fund our program for the next three years. And so we are ending or moving on from our fundraising efforts. We still could use some fundraisers if there's folks out there that's, you know, not here to solicit. But also moving on to our program launch phase. And then we'll work with Mr. Hastings, who, there's, he's one of the members of the school that we asked to collaborate with our board to make sure that there's good communication with the school. And so we'll work with him on all of the logistical issues and work with him with our program launch. So the school will be actively involved with our planning effort. But the funds are all secured for the most part, and we're all ready to go.
What was the target number of students?
20 to 25 is what they list as a good class size. Now, I think there's some flexibility with that, and some of the area programs this year are actually a little bit below that. But I think with Worthington's enrollment and in working with two classes, I'm confident too that we can get to that 20 to 25 every year.
And are we at a spot where your board is prepared, like, ready to start looking for applicants for a facilitator?
Correct. Yeah, that'll be a part of our program launch. That's our, you know, we'll probably concurrently be working on attracting that facilitator and then marketing to the students to make sure that the students, the parents, everybody knows what we're getting into. There's two elective credits that's offered to each student as a part of the curriculum. So as they're working day-to-day with our area businesses, learning about our area businesses and our business sector, working on their own entrepreneurial projects and learning how to establish their own business, that's the piece that they'll be eligible for two elective credits.
Mr. Chair, just to check, the school district will be setting the value of the elected credits? Or is that already determined as part of signing in on the program? Is the elected credits a student receives set by the school district?
Correct.
Or is that something that's already been determined then? Like Bruce is saying two, but I'm just wondering, is that?
So it'll be two, it'll follow the same process that any other like first block class, like per quarter? It'll be a point five, but it'll be a year long. So a student, once they finish their fall semester, that'll be one credit. When they finish their spring semester, it'll be one credit. So it would be very similar to a point like a business intern class that we already have in place or packed for kids that are in ag. This one just happens to be a year long and that there's already curriculum that comes with the facilitator. And it's different because it's outside of our walls. And the facilitator's not hired by us.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that the credit was okay with our processes system and it was acceptable to match up with other classes. Thank you.
I got a question for Tony. The block is 90 minutes, 60 minutes long? The class block, how long is that?
A block would be 80, 85 to 90 minutes, depending on what block it is.
So that's sufficient time for the individual to drive themselves? Or the school got to provide transportation?
Other CEO programs, depending upon where students are going that day, what business they're going to see, some will start even earlier. And there's a couple of programs to the west of us that are smaller districts that have kind of combined in order to get enough students. Some of those students are driving upwards of an hour to ensure that they get to that business. So there is a level of responsibility on the student's part. But everything that we've heard from other districts that have this in place, the kids really step up and they want to be a part of this. So some of them will start their day much earlier than even a normal first block in order to make the time work.
So is it like a one-on-one situation in a business? Are there like four or five individuals that'll go to one business?
My understanding is they all go to the same spot.
Exactly. The whole? The whole 20 to 25 will go to one spot?
Yep. If I may, there's business visits or site visits where maybe it'll work for the whole kid, all of the group to meet there. There's also what they call the business visit where we'll maybe call it somewhere a home base. And I talked to a few locations where we can do that. And the business will come to the students and, you know, where they can learn about it. We hope that there's as many business visits because we think that's where the rubber hits the road. And, you know, we want to empower the kids, but we want to, you know, get the most bang for the buck and hope that these kids come back and like something about the businesses that they see, come back and apply and be a part of our long-term plan as a community.
Okay.
They're learning about the day-to-day decisions of that business and the, all the financials and stuff like that.
The normal year is 40 to 50 business visits and two to three class projects, in which the class project is setting up their own businesses, real dollars, real everything. Working with that facilitator, the dollars are kind of controlled, so there's not a lot of risk. But they're learning actual business setup. They'll be doing, setting up their own business plans. At some points, they're working with community mentors on how to set it up. And then they'll also even have a panel of bankers that they get to go through and fortify their business plans by presenting what they're planning to do and having feedback come back from those bankers on what's the best way to go about financing their business.
Okay. Any further questions? No, we do have a motion now and a second. Always forget if we have one. Okay, any further discussion? Sounds like a good program, and we're anxious to see it kick off.
Very good. Thank you for your show.
All those in favor of the motion, second probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, five point seven, 606.1 discussion. We had a public hearing last night. And this item on the agenda, just for any feedback you may want to have or give your opinion or where we're headed from here and what the timeline might be. And I know there's a committee set up to look at it further. So you're open for a discussion. This is just a discussion item.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just to bring up the discussion as the instruction committee was to continue with the process of the listening session and to have it as an update on the agenda this evening with the intent with the small group that had been organized by Mr. Noble to take the comments made from last evening, the other public opinions that have been submitted in the past few weeks, and then for them to reconvene and to do some further discussion and crafting of the policy, whatever it may be, and then to bring it back for further committee review. At least that was from our committee discussion that was held a week ago.
Steve.
And I would agree with that concept and stuff. I think the practice of what they're doing is we got a committee that's set up now and allow them to work through some of the details on it and see what they can come up with for recommendations for a policy or not to have a policy. And if so, what type of policy? I think we had a lot of input on both viewpoints on this particular subject. And I think there's probably a lot of discussion that could take place to see which one of those comments and suggestions can be melded to fit together in updating a policy. I think it's important for us to clarify the policy we have. Yes, we have it. It came into question whether or not that policy was clear. And that's why some of this stuff came to fruition where we're at now. And I think by looking at further and stuff, we probably can improve upon. That takes some of that confusion that got us to this point to begin with and maybe clarify where we're going in the future. And then we can at least look at what they come up with for recommendations. So I'd say that'd be the best step to go forward.
Any further discussion? The committee meets next Monday.
There is a committee meeting scheduled Monday afternoon when we come back from Thanksgiving break. Policy 606 was mentioned a number of times during the listening session as well. So the committee did not know that that would be an additional policy that we would like them to start to just really dig into as well. So I shared that with the committee just today. I don't expect them to read all of it over the Thanksgiving break. But I feel like that one needs to be on the table as well as we're talking about these things. So that one has been shared as well.
Just without having a meeting yet and stuff, do you have an anticipated timeline to try and come back with a recommendation? Do you think this is going to take before Christmas or after the new year? How fast can this be?
I think that committee, I mean, I'm open to sharing with you guys whatever we come up with in terms of notes that are taken and feedback for you guys. I don't know that the committee necessarily should be the one setting the timeline, but we can keep you guys kind of in tune with the discussions that we're having and the feedback that we're getting from that group. And I do think that, I think you guys as a board have a right to put a timeline on us. I don't know that the review committee is the one that necessarily has the right to make the timeline, if that makes sense.
Have you met once already?
We've only met one time, and that was shortly before the listening session.
Yeah, I hate to put a timeline on until you have a chance to get together and kind of figure out maybe how extensive this might be and be able to also look at your time schedules on how often you can meet or think you need to meet to come to some kind of a recommendation. So that's why I don't, I like to see something before next week's, I'm sorry, next month's meeting would be nice. But here again, I don't want to put an artificial timeline that's not feasible for you to do some really thoughtful work on this.
I think it's important to share. I mean, even after our first review committee and what a number of individuals shared at the listening session, I want people to know that there is no intent to create like overarching censorship and to make students feel like all things go away in terms of what they need to see. I think what we're trying to get down to is how do we ensure that we have some things in place to make sure that everybody feels welcome? But if, if certain lines go too far, do we have the right process in place to try to handle that appropriately? Where everybody feels heard? If we feel like lines are going a little bit too far. But I want people to know, I've heard from lots of different people, and I feel that idea that this censorship feels really scary because the emotions are high. And it's a legitimate feeling. But I want students and staff to know, at least based on the group that I'm in, we don't want that. We don't want overarching censorship. We want to find a way where we can meet the needs of all of our students and help all of our staff feel like they can be there for kids. We also need, whether it be policy or managerial rights, that if something, if a staff member presents something that might be a little too far, how do we handle that appropriately? But I can recognize those feelings because they're real. But I want people to know that I don't believe that that's where any of the board, anybody in the district, is trying to make it go.
Okay, thank you.
I think it might be nice if like in your next meeting, you could talk about what practice or pathway you want to take in evaluating it and maybe update the board next month on that suggested pathway so that we can get a sense of what an appropriate timeline might be.
For sure.
I want to just acknowledge the people who did come to the listening session yesterday and spoke. I think there were about a dozen people who shared their thoughts with us. And I just think that it was a productive gathering. And I appreciated having that space where people could speak, speak up. And I recognize that it takes a lot of courage to share your perspective, whether that be personal or professional. So for people who like didn't feel comfortable speaking, I still welcome you sharing your thoughts over email with me and the rest of the board. So our email addresses are on the district website. And I would love to especially hear from students and how they feel about this. Because ultimately, we have to come up with a policy that has the best interests of students in mind. So I just wanted to make that plug. And also, thank you to, I didn't catch your name, but thank you for speaking tonight. I, I again, recognize it takes a lot of courage to, to speak up. In light of what he shared about, like, where six oh six point one came from, Mr. Noble, could you shed any light about the origin of this policy and whether or not it truly is something that was drafted in nineteen eighty-four, before I was born?
My understanding is Mr. Langard found, um, a number of different policies that were similar in this, in this draft, and then did, um, send that back and forth with his legal counsel. So the question last night about MSBA, um, Lyndon Olson is correct that it was not an MSBA draft, but it was one that Mr. Langard is working with, with his legal counsel. But I, the Bloomington one is one that I have found that is very similar. I believe there were a few others when Mr. Langard was, was looking for some type of option to share back and forth with legal counsel.
And is it your understanding that this is current Bloomington policy, or?
That's my belief, that's my understanding, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay.
Kind of what I gathered last night is, why are we looking at this policy? Everybody's kind of okay with the policy we have, just clear it up a little bit and move on. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm a little disgusted, and I'm ready to put it to bed because I've heard too much about it, and I sit here and I look at our achievement gaps and some of these percentages, and I'm like, hmm. If we put as this much effort as we are into this topic, is what we got for kids not being able to read, we could improve them scores, and I just, I feel like we're focusing on somebody's personal feelings a little too much. And we need to focus on raising these percentages for these kids, we need to focus on educating our kids. Our job is not to raise anybody's kids. We are not their parents. I am a parent of my kids, the school is not a parent to anybody else's kids. I just, I want to put this to bed, I think Lyndon was right, we have a policy, we're blowing this out of proportion based off the news media and one person's feelings. I just think we gotta look at trying to do better for our kids overall with their education.
Okay, is that it, Adam?
Yeah, I just.
I mean, you go on if you want to. I, I understand what you're saying.
No, and I, I, I don't really want to give you my, my true feelings, because I think some of you are gonna be upset with what I have to say, but this is getting pretty upsetting, that we're putting this much focus into this. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I think, as I shared with Mr. Noble, I think the committee's gonna meet, I, I kind of expect them to have a draft ready for a first reading at the next meeting, but that's yet to be determined how it goes, so. Remember, a first reading is just a first reading, there's still gonna be changes after that. But I think we need to get this moving, get on with it, and get on to other things that we need to address, because, you know, so much time on this issue will be enough shortly, so.
I think the, the idea of reworking six oh six, if there needs to be some adjustments in the, uh, instructional material, policy six oh six that we already have in place, I think that is not necessarily the wrong approach. I think that is where we need to stay in concert with the board, though. That, that's where I don't believe the review committee makes the determination that six oh six one is completely off the table. I think we can come up with ideas for you guys, but I think that it would be the boards, we would need your guidance to say, okay, we feel like that might be the best route, or no, we want to continue to focus on the wording and the intent behind, behind six oh six one. I could support either, after hearing more and more listening sessions and, and others' members speak, it's not wrong to say, okay, six oh six one maybe isn't the right approach, maybe we have further conversations around six oh six. I'm open to either, and that review committee, I think, is open to either, but we're gonna need some guidance from the board.
Mr. Chair.
Steve.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with Adam regarding the fact that we don't want to have to dwell upon this for any longer than we really need to, to find some kind of a direction or resolution on this. However, I think part of the issue came up when, when the administration took action on what they thought was appropriate to, to address a concern from our, from our, uh, from a constituent, uh, from a parent, and, and from other people who have since come in and said they are also concerned. So I think that there, there, the problem exists, and I think also, the, the teachers have made a request that, that something be clarified, uh, and so I think we owe it to the staff to, to help clarify, uh, what the process is for when administration comes forward and what the process will be for addressing these issues. And I think that's what we're probably, need to be working on here, is finding something that will work, uh, to address issues when they come up in the future. Doesn't have to necessarily be this issue, could be other ones too, but we want to find the process and refine that so we know where we stand and where they know where we stand on, on, on what we will do when something comes up and how to handle this. So I think, I think we need to finish the process and come up with something that will work for the future, um, and something, I could say, learned by what happened, and then work toward finding a way that we don't run into this again. It doesn't mean it's not gonna happen, but that's what our goal should be.
Mr. Chairman, I feel, after listening to all the people who come with their opinions last night, their views, we cannot rush this agenda. There's a lot of information to overlook, review, because it needs to be written right for nobody gets hurt and everybody's protected. We cannot put a timeline on here at a month. I feel it's too much information to go over and get correct. We don't need to rush into this situation and have it done in a month. Let's take our time, review all the information that was brought forward to the board, and let's try to get something written that everybody can understand and get along with. There's no time schedule for a month. We have six oh six policy enforcers ready. Let's revise the policy, what we have, not make a new policy that's gonna overreact six oh six, let's try to get some common ground. And I think it's really important to have a procedure down of, if something occurs, how it's handled correctly. That's my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Well, they'll let us know how they come along, I mean, we're not gonna set a thirty-day limit, but if they're ready in thirty days, we'll, we'll look at it. We'll let them determine how much time you need, but I guess you're gonna have to keep us updated, so.
I'll keep you updated.
Yeah.
And, and I, I'm glad that we didn't rush this last month, and I think we need to continue to, like, thoroughly examine this and defer to, to those who are tasked with, tasked with looking at this specifically. We, as a board, can't isolate ourselves from it, we're not immune from it. These, these types of issues are what students and staff and administrators deal with every single day, and, and I think we, it would be doing a disservice if we rush this and require that something be, be wrapped up in a month. So I, I agree with, with Tom and others that we need to take our, take our time.
But remember, the first month would just be a first reading, and it takes minimum two months to pass it, since we do it in monthly meetings, so. One month is just saying, okay, if you're ready for a first reading, if you're not, I just let them decide when they have something they want to present to us, and we'll have to decide.
I, I think that when, when it comes to what the committee considers, or whether we provide, if we want to provide some guidance to the committee, um, I, I would support examining six oh six and see if we can make policy six oh six a bit more robust, um, and I would also would encourage the consideration of some type of inclusion policy, and I think training for staff and administrators is going to be really critical as well. So I, I see this more of a, as a holistic approach or strategy, rather than the adoption of one policy.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, that, with that statement, then I think there has to be definition given to the, the group identified on what they're being charged with, because that's different than what they're working on right now. And so, if that is an intent, there needs to be consensus, I think, prior to them going one direction, with the hope of something else being provided.
So, I mean, I think Mr. Noble stated that already, he's shared with them that they have to think about six oh six in addition to six oh six point one, um, but I, I welcome others' input on, um, whether they should talk about trainings or others, other things to supplement whatever policy is changed or passed.
I think that part of it goes beyond what we're asking them to do personally. I mean, we, we have, in my idea of, uh, hope with involving a smaller group was to get teachers and administrators, the ones that are in the trenches with this, to, to get us off the starting block. I think any policy becomes better as you grow it and mold it as we go forward. And so, I don't think we're gonna have the finished product immediately. That certainly, training and additional policies are necessary, but, like, the more we discuss it, the larger it becomes, and I don't think that was, we're developing more than what we're really after, in my opinion, so. I think that focus has to stay narrowed, um, a- and then we continue to improve it.
Yeah, I, I wasn't part of any discussion regarding the creation of this review committee, and I, I haven't, um, I don't know exactly what they were charged with or what, what specifically the purpose of it is, so, um, forgive me if I'm expanding the scope. I guess I'm, I'm sharing with you what, what I think would be appropriate for a holistic approach, you know, long-term, moving forward.
Let the committee discuss and then update the instructional committee next month, correct? Is that kind of where we're at, instructional committee is, and then they can recommend if we need to discuss more at the board meeting?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I can do it both ways, I can, um, I can try to update you guys as a full board, but for sure, we could have something, uh, ready at the instructional committee to let them know where we're at. I, I do foresee a need to, to potentially reach out to you guys, even in the interim, with, with some questions and some updates, rather than just wait till the instructional. But for sure, I think we could have a, a definite update by the instructional committee.
And by my, my comments, I don't mean rush this. Joel's right, keep this moving so we can just focus on other topics and other subjects we're struggling with in this district, because I think we have a lot worse things going on than this whole agenda.
Right, we'll wait, look forward for an update from the committee, and remember, any policy can be changed at any time, a policy's not written in stone. Write it, try it for a while, if it needs to be amended or changed, is it, we've changed policies many times, so. Steve.
Before we move off this, I just want to make a request, not just to, to the board or anybody else, it's just, if somebody has a sample of an inclusion policy, I certainly would like to see it, because I haven't seen one yet, so, uh, if there's one out there, if anybody, anybody comes across it in your research or whatever, if you don't mind finding something and sending it on, I'd appreciate it. You can send it to me, or you can send it to the whole board, but I, just a request to the group here, uh, if you got an inclusion policy, please share it.
Okay, any further discussion? We'll wait for, we'll wait, look forward to reports from. Okay, five point eight, approved land purchase. And David?
Um, yeah, we're just looking for formal approval of the, the purchase of the, uh, the eighty between, basically, the Learning Center, Community Ed, and the middle school that, uh, we, we purchased the end of October, I guess it was. Total cost is one million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Which was how much per acre, twenty thousand, seven fifty?
No.
I've had some time to reflect on this a little since our closed session, and I'm gonna be disapproving this tonight. I just feel that we should have been more upfront with the public about our closed session, telling them that, hey, we're gonna go buy this land, and I do feel that we should have had a set price. I feel like there's a lot of hard feelings, and I don't know that we necessarily need the land right now, and I just feel that we did a disjustice to our taxpayers by really not coming out and telling them, hey, we're gonna go buy this at no set price.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the land purchase. We had this discussion earlier about the advantages and benefits of investing in our future, and, uh, I think we've made the decision for all the right reasons. Sometimes the public expresses opinions based on misinformation or lack of information or lack of foresight, uh, but I think we'd made the right decision to proceed with this. I don't think we overpaid for the land. Obviously, there was someone else bidding on this that thought it was worth that also, we just happened to be thinking it was worth a little bit more to us than they did to them, and I think in the long run, like all the investments we make into the future, it's when you go ten, twenty years out, or when it comes time for this, people are gonna be looking back and saying what a smart board we were for making these decisions back at that time, and look, look what the advantage is now, when they need it and when they're making use of it. So I do make a motion to finish our action from earlier, which was to purchase this property and, and close it out.
A motion by Steve.
Second, Whitbom.
Second. By Matt. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just think it'd be a good opportunity to try to continue to express some of the facts to the, uh, the citizenry, that at the same auction, tillable land brought fourteen thousand nine hundred, fourteen thousand seven fifty, that was the same auction. Within a week or two of this auction, tillable land in our county brought sixteen thousand, and this was farmland, the purchase price that we paid of the twenty thousand seven fifty was for development land, which is less than what's being paid for other developmental parcels. And the other fact, as far as who's going to be operating land, I hope that's discussed in our, uh, uh, operational committee later, but there's intent to engage our ag department and the college with being the, the tenant of that, and from a tax impact, there's, um, Mr. Lorenz, Mr. Bloom, myself, own land, all within miles of this will, and the other parcels of land that's sold, that will all be, be impacted by the increase of purchase prices, for the valuations that, uh, will be impacted going forward. That's all I had to share, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Uh, this property is for long-term use, it is not short-term, but we do have an FFA program that's interested in using it.
Steve will share that with the committee up there.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, Steve can share that. So long-term investment, and we have the fund balance dollars to cover it, it's a one-time cost, and it's for the future use, and I think, I think that property is very valuable, valuable to the district for long-term consideration, and, um, it comes for sale once. Remember, the property where Prairie is built on was bought probably forty years before we used the property, and we're glad that they had that space available, so. It's a long-term investment, and I think it's a good move to do. I've had positive comments for it also from the public, so it's not all negative, uh, many people said that's long-term planning, district needs to own it, so.
Mr. Chairman, one more point, if I could ask Mr. Skog to clarify where the dollars came from to purchase this land, and from a tax impact standpoint, these were dollars in the fund already.
We have an assigned, an assigned fund, yes. We have approximately sixteen million in there right now, and that's where the, the remainder of this will come from.
And that those dollars are to be used for purchases and projects.
Projects, yes.
Thank you.
That'll come out of the assigned, not the unassigned.
Come out of the assigned.
And that does not have a tax impact for the next year on the citizen?
No.
Because the dollars were already in the school's budget, or not budget, but bank. Thank you.
Right, and we have purchased a property, I mean, we have put the down payment down, so. You want to lose a ten or twenty percent, like? You wanna lose a ten or twenty percent, I guess you could vote no, but I would recommend that we pass this motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on this. Yes, the money is in the general funds, and it's not gonna have a regular tax impact, but yes, it could have a tax impact. If we keep spending, we're gonna delinquish our fund held, our fund balance. So, every year, we do a tax levy on our citizens. If we keep spending, we gotta keep using the max levy to get revenue back in our general fund. So, yes, and in a roundabout way, I feel it does have a tax impact on District 518. So, it's not just free money to spend. That money come from the taxpayers from the start to have a fund balance. So, it is a tax impact on the residents.
My point was, though, it won't be on their tax bill this year.
No, it will not.
Previously accumulated tax dollars.
But the money is generated from tax dollars.
Right, because this is their priority. We take that one point six and put it to there, to this land. You could take that one point six, put it somewhere else, but this, this is a priority that the board has to decide if that's what they wanted to do. And at the closed session, it was, at that time, I thought unanimous that we should buy the property, so.
Yeah, but I can remember, what, four or five months ago, everybody was concerned about the operating referendum levy has to be passed. So, here's another situation is, we keep spending money, we might have to have another operating referendum. If I remember right, that was a comment in four to five years, money could be tight. So, we have to watch how we spend our budget. Hopefully, the operational committee or whatever has reviewed the budget, how we're gonna spend our money for the next four or five years on income and everything to make sure it stays in balance, we do not have to have another operating referendum increase in years. That's my concern.
Okay, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five point nine, review the project priority list. Do we have a list in front of us, sir?
My understanding, this was brought to the operational committee. Mr. Langard is asking for feedback on mainly the priority pieces, so you'll see on each item listed on that handout where he has listed what he believes are the priorities, but I think he's looking for feedback from the board in terms of where, where you see that priority line.
Chair, the operation committee did take a look at this, and, and as we noted in that committee meeting, that there are items on here that obviously move parallel with each other consecutively. We have several priority number one, and it's hard to pick one over the other. I think, you know, we'll take them as they are necessary and become available to us, and opportunity is, is, is there for us to address it, and then, and then we'll move on. So, we didn't really have a recommendation from the committee to change anything that was on the, on the list, or reprioritize it. We felt that the priorities that were listed with it were representative of our past discussions. And also, we felt that, that there are things on the list that could move, move as time goes on, that some priorities may, may become more important and others may fall back, depending on, on many factors that we just don't have in our control. So, at this point, we did not have any recommendations to change the document or the presentation that was given to us.
We, we discussed a little bit about whether some of these priorities may benefit from cross-collaboration with other entities, especially when it comes to athletic complexes. So, I think just, you know, continue conversations with, with the city and with other entities about whether there could be any joint initiatives with any of these.
And I think our main priority, we decided, is still our high school addition. That's still our priority.
So, at this point, we're recommending no changes to the priority list, just review it as time, as, as the projects come forward.
Mr. Chairman, just one point, and I've shared this before, and I, I personally will not support any building of anything until we have some, a facility governing board or a sports facility commission. So, we, we truly have every entity at the same table, and we go through the whole process of having them lead and prioritize from the larger scale, as you mentioned. But I certainly hope that we have that in lockstep with the plan to be doing these projects. And from the, the high school addition plan, is that, are we getting closer to making drawings or those kinds of things, or what? Does it take any formal process of where that's at on the priority level?
My understanding is they've been requested, but I have not seen any myself.
At this point, I can believe they've just tried to get some estimates on some possible updates and additions. There's nothing that I'm aware of that's formally drawn out.
Sure.
Till we select a, till we select a column, correct, Steve?
Yep.
We really won't start no drawings. We basically gotta get estimates, different variant estimates, and then decide which one we wanna start with. But we have asked that we get that soon.
So, that's really the only item on the listing that is on the immediate to-do list?
No, they're, they're actually all on the list, just in different stages and phases and stuff. That's the one that's probably, as I said, is priority number one, to keep that one moving, but they're also working on other parts of it. For example, the, the middle school parking lot. We have other things that are being worked on and stuff and moving forward, but, you know, so, so nothing is sitting on itself. One gets done, the next one starts up. They're all kind of in motion.
Right.
And we're just at different phases with them, although, you know, we wanna really pursue the high school. The priority number ones are probably the top ones, when you have time to work on, the others fall down, and they come up as they are necessary.
And that was my question, like, a number eleven or number twelve, Prairie Foundation work, and number, which one's, the one talking about the roof? You know, are those structural problems or, or concerns that should be higher on the list?
Those are, are basically long-term facility maintenance projects. So, I mean, there's a mix of, you know, things that would come out of your assigned account. There's some bonding potential, and then the long-term facility. And as a, as a district, we prioritize which projects we need to push forward, whether it's a roof, a new rooftop unit, the foundation parking lots, and then we bring those to the board as to what we feel is next on the list.
Okay.
And I, these are just kind of listed there, so they're on there.
Sure.
I'm not sure the priority is necessarily correct or incorrect.
Thank you.
And just, yeah, part of our committee meeting, we did talk about the facilities commission also, and the need to, to try and get that reorganized and, and moving forward again. So, we were, we were having the same thoughts as you are, Matt, from what you expressed before, that, that'd be a good committee to get started again. We have, part of it before was investigating what we needed and what we had, and now it's, probably the next step would be is say, we have, we have the need to move forward with actually implementing that, that's, and, you know, revitalize that study and get going, get the people back together again, and work together as a community.
I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, that the middle school athletic field update, that was another top priority, wasn't it, about a year ago?
The which one?
The middle school tur, re-turfing of the football field and making another re-leveling of the practice field.
Number three.
That was another, about a year ago, I think that was another top priority.
Yeah, and that's on the list.
Building anything.
That's on the list as number three.
Yeah.
Yep. So, you know, like I say, a lot of these ones have been talked about, are still on the list, I believe, so. I would, so we don't have a motion, do we need to vote on this? Or just?
This is just a discussion.
Okay.
Okay, is that it for discussion? Okay, we'll move on to reports. Superintendent's report, Josh, you're filling in?
I have no other reports.
No other report? Okay. Instructional committee report?
It's all been covered.
It's all been covered?
If so. The only item that was discussed a bit was looking at potential changing of this high school building schedule?
Yeah, there is some discussion in building levels with middle school, high school, just starting conversations about, is there a need? Would it benefit students to adjust some schedules? I think, based on what we heard at the instructional committee, if there are gonna be changes, they'd be minor for next year. Some of the changes that are being discussed would be a lot bigger system change, in terms of even credits, and how students would move through those required grad credits, and if they're gonna move in that direction, it would take a little more time. But I think the idea would be there might be some minor changes in both middle school and high school next year, but not necessarily major changes.
Anything else for instructional? Matt, I was there, but I don't recall else.
I covered it.
Okay. Thank you. Operations, Steve?
Yes, a lot of things we had, we had talked about have been covered, but one of the things we had a pretty, we had a presentation and, and a long discussion on was, was management of some of the property that we do have available to us. And the proposal we are, is to work with Minnesota West and our, our high school ag program to provide an educational opportunity for the management of that property through a classroom structure, where they would oversee the, the, the farming of the property, and not necessarily farming it themselves, but, but hiring, or, or come up with a, with a renter, working with them, making decisions for what to be planted, and, and, and the management of the property as far as fertilizers and, and crops and those types of things, different methods of farming and those things. So, they would, they would set up a program to, to use this property as a management, learning environment for Minnesota West and the high school ag program to work through that. At this point, they're, they're, they're looking back to see what it would, what they would need to set up this program at the college level, and, and what the, what the relationship would be between our high school students and the college program for potential credits through the college for high school graduation as part of their ag program. Obviously, not every ag student is going to be part of this process, but those who have interest in pursuing this information and, and learning experience would have an opportunity to do that. So, Adam, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add about that program? I know it's been, this wasn't the first time it's been discussed or brought up in conversation. This was brought up several months ago about, about how we can use the available property so that we have, until they are needed for other purposes, and, and it's long been held or, or talked about for a while now, about having a program through our high school and possibly, and also through the college to set up a learning program, a hands-on learning program by using this property. And so, that's being investigated, and hopefully, we'll be able to put something together, maybe not by springtime, but, but hopefully by going into next fall, it'd be a college program and open to the high school students to participate in it.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, years ago, before the middle school was built, that was already in the ag program. It was the senior ag class that was part of the management of that property out there. The senior class elected a farm manager, and they made the decisions of how they're gonna operate that farm. And it kind of got discontinued when they built the middle school. And I really would like to see this come back into play.
Yep.
But it's getting late in the year. How's it gonna be implemented, implemented by the first planning time comes? So, does the school need to rent it out for a year and get this set up as in twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty, whatever the next school year is?
I think Jeff Rogers was pretty sure they could get this ball rolling for next year. And we really don't need to be in a hurry to rent it. We can put this thing out for bids if we have to next spring, and yeah, somebody's gonna farm it. I think you need to give them a time, let's see if they can put a plan together. It needs to be used for educational purposes, in my opinion, now that we, we have it. And I think Minnesota West is probably a little more prepared, and that's probably why they were reached out to, to collaborate with our ag program. So, I think it's gonna be a building block for the ag program, but what a better resource than Minnesota West ag department to work with. And if they can get this going, and they can start leading them into this, and if we gotta come up with some classes, some curriculum, that's gonna come with this. It's gonna start at a small scale. It, it might be pretty simple next year, but it's no different than anything else, what it's going to lead to in the future and what they're gonna learn from. So, I'm pretty confident with Jeff Rogers and the Minnesota West ag department, kind of grabbing a hold and managing it for the first year or two with the WHS ag department, that they can just take this right over, and we don't have to worry about somebody farming this ground for a year or two, or whatever it may be.
I'd really like to see the Wellington High School take the lead of the program.
And I think they will eventually, Tom.
That's my concern.
And I don't think we're looking at who's going to lead this. I also think we're looking at it as a collaboration to where it's gonna start in the eleventh and twelfth grade, and it might continue on for them at Minnesota West, for the kids that just want a two-year program. It might enhance what they've learned in the high school. It's just, it's a stair-stepping ordeal, and I, I think we just need to give them time, let's not worry about renting the ground out, just give them the time. And I, I think you got until March thirty-first to make up your mind if they can do it or not, and.
I just wanna see it start in the high school. I don't wanna see, it was five eighteen money that bought this property, it needs to start in the high school. Needs to start in District 518. If the community college wants to be involved in it, that's fine. It needs to start in the high school ag department, where it needs to start.
And I think that's something that our ag department can guide us on, and whether or not they feel that they are equipped to handle it and do it on their own, or if it's better to collaborate with other people, such as Minnesota West. Here, at this point, it is a proposal. We want them to start, we, we, we wanted them to start putting ideas together on how this would work, so they could bring it back to us, so we could have some more discussion. The reason why I bring it up today is just to tell you that, that we are, we are looking, it is being looked into, and we're trying to get some kind of idea of what kind of program could be put together, and then at that point, we'll get a better idea of, of, like you're saying, Tom, who's managing, who's be the lead, and how that will go forward before we move it forward for some kind of a program decision.
Well, I'm not sitting here saying I'm opposed to anything.
Oh, no, I know you're not opposed to it.
I just want to see it start in Wellington ag department like it was forty years ago.
And Wellington ag department is involved in this. They were sitting at the table side by side, talking about, and they'll be working together to see what can be developed into a program to come back for a proposal that we can present to the board. So, we just wanted to get the ball rolling, because as you said, you know, summer's coming up fast, we wanted to get them on top of it and starting to work on it as soon as we could. So, we just would let you know that we have asked them to do that, and, and they'll be coming back to us with ideas.
I'm sure we got qualified ag teachers that can handle it.
Well, more forthcoming, right? We'll hear more about this as the winter goes on and before springs.
Just voice in my opinion as a board member.
I think the ag department will no doubt be involved, and maybe with the help of Minnesota West, but we'll let the details come out in the future here. Any further discussion?
Just one question. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. One other question about anything on the West demolition? Still waiting on a potential date on that?
We're still waiting for a date.
Okay.
He indicated he'd have a better idea by the end of this month.
Okay.
I have not seen anything at this point. We have been in communication with him, but.
Okay. Aaron?
Just for other reports I wanted to share with the board, that I, last week, I attended a school law conference in Minneapolis that was co-sponsored by the Minnesota School Board Association, and just wanted to say thank you to, to the school district for allowing me to attend that conference. It was a day-long, there were six sessions, and they were all about different changes in laws affecting schools. So, different sessions on negotiations, student discipline, and so on.
on negotiations, student discipline, and so on. Learned a lot about updates that, and particularly changes from the 2023 legislature. So happy to, happy to chat about school law and what I learned, if anyone's interested. But mostly, just wanted to, to share that and, and say thank you to the district.
Thank you for attending.
I can see that's one thing I miss about Lyndon Olson.
The legislative updates. Okay, any other reports? Hearing none, we'll call the meeting adjourned.
Very good.
And she was saying, I'll hopefully get them on now.
Oh, yeah, she was right.
Optimistic.